Okay. Good evening again, Carolyn Rice School Board Chair. We're back in workshop session at 9:25 PM and we're welcoming Mr. Freeman to introduce our construction projects update.
Good evening. We're here just to give you a brief update. This is typically done in the fall timeframe. It is a routine update of our construction progress and we determined when we looked at the quality calendar that this was a good fit to be able to have it work. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Tony Arnold to walk us through our projects.
Welcome, Mr. Arnold. Thank you for being patient with us.
You save the best for last, Madam Chair. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Spence. I hope this is a welcome diversion for you guys. So we are really, we're fortunate and thankful that our industry has largely been uninterrupted and was deemed essential back when this started in March. And so we have seen very little impact, a couple of minor issues that I'll talk about in a minute, but I'm going to walk you through all of our capital construction projects that are ongoing and talk a little bit about some of our operating budget infrastructure projects. Our three large modernization replacement projects, John B. Dye, Thurgood Elementary, and Prince Sam Middle School, which represent projects 32, 33, and 34, that facilities that have either been modernized or replaced in the past 22 years. Total value of those three projects, just under $138 million. That brings the total of our modernization program to just shy of $760 million. John B. Dye Elementary School Modernization. I am excited to tell you that when you drive down Great Neck Road, that all the portables are gone, all the construction trailers are gone, and the project is substantially complete after three really long years. We really feel like it was worth the wait. If you've been inside the building, you see that. Project started in 2017. You'll, I'll show you an aerial. We're in the process of really finishing up site work. A little bit of site work left waiting on the playground equipment. That should be here within the next 30 days. And so project turned out really good. There's a couple of interior aerials. You see some public art from Oni Tony in the main entry lobby. And then a view of the courtyard, collaboration space in the middle, and the new gymnasium. I really, I can't say enough about Beth Bianchi and her staff at Dye, you know, to coexist. You really take on a whole another job for the better part of three years. You've got your job as an educator and everything associated with that. And then you're also involved in a construction project for really what amounted to a little bit more than 36 months. So kudos to them for their patience and we really think that it turned out well and it's going to be a building that's going to serve us for a long time to come. Thurgood Elementary School. The project is substantially complete. We're about 90% through moving furniture and equipment in. Cheryl Zigrang and her staff started moving over from Hermitage last week. So Conrad Brothers, the general contractor, has really done an outstanding job. It's really a great building. We took Dr. Spence and Dr. Bergen and Jack Freeman and a couple of other folks through. About three weeks ago, we walked Dye and Thurgood and PA Middle that I'll show you in a minute. And just something that this school board and our community should really, really be proud of, of what y'all have played a big role in our council as well and accomplishing with these projects. Aerial photograph, actually that was taken about two weeks ago. So you can see the new building to the left, and this is a front view. The fields and the parking lot sit where the old building used to sit. And really, one of the most innovative things is the bus traffic will come off of Independence from the back of the building. And so for the first time, the ability to separate car and bus traffic, which for 30-plus years, we've been telling parents to put their kids on the bus. Now we're telling parents to drive their kids to school. And so it's good to have parent drop-off lanes that are a little bit longer. So this new site plan will help with that. Some interior shots as we're getting buttoned up and starting to move furniture and equipment in. Picture the library and media center from up above, top left, new gymnasium down below. And again, Cheryl Zigrang and her really friendly family of staff over there to have picked up the entire school community and moved them over to 45 portable classrooms. Everybody was a part of what it takes to do that and making that their cottages, their home. You know, I always say that if you put a great teacher in a box and turn the lights on and give them instructional materials, that they can do a great job. And so, you know, kids are really flexible. We saw that in what happened over at the swing space. And so they're a little actually sorry to see that. I think they enjoyed their stay over there, but we're excited to, we're really excited to get them into the new building and get kids in the building. Just as an aside, the 45 portable classrooms were actually gone by the end of June. And so we've reduced our portal inventory over the past two decades from Ohio of about 368 down to 54. And so obviously declining enrollment helps with that, but being a little smarter about how we manage our buildings and that reduces a whole lot of operational costs associated with maintaining portable classrooms. Prince Sam Middle School, again, we toured that as well. It's really, it's the same team that designed and built the old donation school. Our architect's Rob Burge, project architect on our staff, Tim Cole, our sustainability officer, all the way through our construction inspector, Tony Ringo. McKenzie Construction, same superintendent, Don Montague, who built the old donation school for us is over at PA Middle. They're about 75% complete. This is one project that has felt a little bit of an impact through COVID. The stage rigging and lighting equipment is a specialty item that comes out of New York and so that supply chain has been slightly interrupted. And we expect to get that after the first of the year. It should have been here late summer, early fall. So the promised delivery date for the opening of this building is September of '21. We were pushing and are still pushing to try to find a way to open the building in the spring, similar to what we did at the old donation school where we moved in a little bit early. So we're still keeping that option open, but we're going to have to evaluate the impact on the auditorium space. And a good aerial view, that is, that's natural grass that we had, we had an inquiry about that it looks so good that it looks like synthetic turf. But no, that's natural grass and we'll actually later this fall start installing plant material. We're starting to get the site buttoned up and that project is going really well. Couple of interior shots, really, one of my favorite things in this building, the top right is a shot of the gymnasium and you'll see a second floor track in the gym. And like at BMI where I went to school, you've got an old gymnasium that's got a second floor track. A lot of older colleges have that, I think, at Boston Garden. Some of our newer rec centers have it. And so this idea, we talk about collaboration and stakeholder input. And so this idea actually came from a student who had been to one of the rec centers and so, you know, why can't we do that at the new school? So you buy the volume and so anyways, that was something that is new that I think is going to provide for some innovation in the gymnasium. A couple more interior shots, again, a really, really great building. The three buildings I just showed you, Dye, Thurgood, and PA Middle, will represent our 10th, 11th, and 12th lead certified buildings in our inventory. All right, Plaza Annex Edition project is really, has been broken up into three different phases. We did our early parking lot phase. For those of you who visit Plaza around the back, the phase, the next phase is part of the general contract is their interior renovations of the professional development center, what we refer to as the old cafeteria. And then the final phase is the two-story 50,000 square foot addition that's currently going up around the back. The staff from Laskin Road Annex will move into the new Plaza Edition in the first quarter of next year. The project is on, is the renovations to the PDC are on schedule, but here's another one where the movable partitions that provide the ability to divide that space up were impacted by COVID and we're presently waiting on them. I actually heard today that they should hopefully be here in the next couple of weeks, but that space is finishing up. And last thing is to install the technology and get those partitions up. The new addition, and I'll show you an aerial, the new addition out back, we had some minor interruptions to structural steel, so it's about 30 days behind, but we're still hustling to get in there in February of next year. And you can see the parking lot kind of top right and they actually just, they just poured the second floor slab for the two-story addition last week. And you've got, you guys have been briefed on this. You met the new program leader, Chris Freeman, about a month ago. Really, really just a really cool project for us. It's not a big project. Conrad Brothers is building the Environmental Studies Program Edition over at the Brock Center, same contractor that's building, presently building and finishing up Thurgood. It's underway. We're pushing for a end-of-the-year completion date where we'll be ready to move students in for the second semester. When students do come back, there is, if you've been to the Brock Center, the oyster room, which is the bigger room on the right, will be used for classes this fall when students come back. But you see a rendering bottom left of what the additional look like and you see imporing concrete. They poured the second floor concrete slab last week, but really, a really innovative project. And the partnership that has been in place with CBF for so long and Lynn Haven River now, they're a joy to work with and the impact that they have on kids and the positive impact they have on the environment, it's really, really, it just strengthens a great partnership. And I just can't say enough about Mrs. Brock. And she told Tim Cole and I both, and I think Dr. Spence got the same message, to get on with it, let's get this thing built. She wants to see the doors open. So just a wonderful woman. Project that you probably haven't heard a lot about, but we've, it's funded and we have started some of what I call the high-level programming, which is the Achievable Dream Edition at Lynn Haven Middle School. Seventh graders, sixth and seventh graders were in Lynn Haven Middle, eighth graders show up to September, obviously ninth graders after that. And so the classroom addition, which is a $12.75 million project to construct a classroom addition to Lynn Haven Middle School to accommodate the Achievable Dream program, nine through 12, programming is started. We actually have our first stakeholder meeting. Tenille Vows, the principal there, has got some students and parents picked out. And so in the next two or three weeks, we're going to get those folks together with the architect and start going through some of the concepts and plans for the classroom addition. We'll start, we're scheduled to start construction next fall and finish the project in late '22 with a mid-year, mid-school year, January '23 projected opening. And so we know that when ninth graders come next year, that that school will more than likely need to be serviced with a couple of portable classrooms to accommodate the high school kids. We've known that all along, but exciting project. We're also, we're also going to, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some library flips. I know board members saw that. We flipped 18 libraries about a year ago and we're flipping two more this summer and we're going to introduce a library flip at Lynn Haven Middle in the first phase of this project, which is something that we'll see an impact earlier than when the classroom addition is done. Summer infrastructure projects, just under $35 million. And I will tell you that when buildings sat empty, starting in March, and you saw us advocate when we had a board meeting or to cancel to keep construction projects going, we did have to shelve a couple, but we utilized the time when buildings were closed in May and June to get an early jump on some of this larger work. So that has proved to be very helpful. We have got more going on in our buildings this summer than in my, I can tell you, my three decades here from capital and operating in terms of large projects. Lampstead Elementary and Middle School, it's 283,000 square foot building that is almost 30 years old. It's hard for me to believe. We started the first phase of the project last summer. It was originally intended to be a three summer project, the summer being the second. It's a huge, huge project, $14 million, all-new roof, all-new HVAC system to that old building. We could have built two elementary schools 25 years ago for that. But the early jump and really great work that D.E. Kirby has done and accommodating both Mark McAvack and Jeff Hoffman over there have been really accommodating to the contractor. And so we think that we're going to get out of the building a summer early and not have to come back next summer. So we're hustling, hustling to get out of there, but project's going really, really well. But folks, that reminds you about, you know, the importance of as buildings age, you've got to invest back in your older assets. That building is still only 28 years old. Couple of shots of roof and above ceiling work, and really the next one is interesting. So the clear story in the commons area, the one on the left is the original one that looks almost like it's nicotine stained. And so what that's meant to in terms of natural light in that building has made a huge difference when you walk into the building, not to mention the fact that it was leaking around the edges. Kempsville High School HVAC re-roof, $6.85 million. This is a two-year project for Texco as a general contractor. The folks at Kempsville High School enjoyed our company so much when we did the entrepreneurial academy and widened the hallways and ripped the lockers out that they invited us back to put a new roof on the building. Contractor's doing a good job, but we'll be back again next summer to finish up the re-roof. Contending with our energy performance contracting initiative, these three schools, Bayside Middle, Luxford, and Providence Elementary Schools, all are getting complete LED lighting retrofits, which obviously drive the energy consumption down. But you have seen in some of our buildings where we've done this, really improves the environment inside the building, the lighting levels get better. Providence is, in fact, there was a, I call them a sidewalk superintendent had called into the beacon and wanted to know what was going on at Providence. So all-new windows, HVAC system. What we didn't get to when we put a geothermal system in, we're putting the balance of the building on the geothermal system this summer. New entry vestibule, we're upgrading the kitchen to be a scratch cooking site. So really, that building, Providence, will be, will really be transformed when we're done. We got it, this is one where we got an early jump in the middle of May, which was really helpful. Quite frankly, we had, as sometimes is the case, we had too much work to do in the summer window. This project, make-up air unit replacements, is one that got, almost got sidelined and we pushed for it, and I'm glad we did. You've heard comments about HVAC and airflow and so this, this project providing make-up air units, $2.75 million at these three schools will replace make-up air units that are well past their useful life on these buildings. Will help immensely with airflow. And I will tell you that our folks in our maintenance shop, we've got a mechanical systems engineer, Ryan Hershey, who's a professional mechanical engineer, and they're just doing really great work in terms of preventive maintenance. The quiet time that we've experienced the last four or five months has allowed us to get ahead of some things in terms of PM on the mechanical side. Small Point of View Elementary School HVAC project, about $650,000, replacing the HVAC equipment in the admin, library, and media center, music, and art. Again, that's another one that almost got lost in March, but we were able to get it approved and pushed through. Glenwood Elementary School Kitchen HVAC, yes, we still, 30 years ago, didn't provide air conditioning in our kitchens and in fact, we call it sweating in the soup, you know, so you, if we're, if we're, I shouldn't leave you with that. You know, this is, this is a kitchen that we're also flipping to scratch cooking. And so, you know, you do want, you want to make every environment in the school building a comfortable place to come to work. We've still got some kitchens that we're going to be working on to make them, make them comfortable.
Well, I live over there, so over there by Glenwood. What's happening to the front of the building?
We, we had some, some original lentils, steel lentils over top of the entrances where we had some rust. We had some expansion and contraction, so it's a, it's an operating budget masonry job where we're fixing some structural issues that's likely going to, we're going, we got the areas that needed to get done, were getting done this summer, that were, that were more critical and will probably be back next summer.
Oh, okay. Just wondering. Thank you.
Plaza Middle School locker replacement. My alma mater when I was a junior high school and I used to walk to school, replacing all the old lockers. Kids still use lockers in middle schools. I don't think you'll see us replacing high schools and lockers anymore, or installing lockers for that matter, when we do get around to replacing Prince Sam High School. Couple of library flips, like I mentioned, the two this year are Brandon Middle School and Providence. Providence is going on with all the other work that's going on over at Providence. We figured if we're going to be in there doing everything else, that we might as well go ahead and get in there and knock the library out. A lot of that is new furniture and equipment. That's what you saw in a lot of the other library flips. But also, it's a point of pride for our maintenance folks where a fair amount of the renovation work and the carpentry work and the checkout desk are self-performed by our talented, talented folks down in the carpenter shop. So we've got some really talented, talented folks down there. That'll bring us up to 20 library flips. And like I mentioned, we're going to, we're going to do Lynn Haven Middle School next and one other elementary school to be determined. Huge, make a huge difference in the heart of every building. And non-capital but stuff that our maintenance services, smaller projects, nearly $9 million in that we've painted 12 buildings, you know, things that you don't see, electrical upgrades, generators, transformers, switchboards, lighting, small HVAC projects that are not of a capital nature, carpeting replacement, refinishing all the gym floors, miscellaneous building envelope improvements. We got a fair amount of that going on at Ocean Lakes High School on a building that is now 26 years old. Removing some old ethos drive it that didn't work out too well. We've got a fair amount of small scratch cooking projects going on, the masonry work over at Glenwood. So, you know, when you, when you look at the amount of work from a capital perspective, the larger projects, the summer infrastructure work, and then the small operating budget projects, there's about $212 million worth of improvements that are going on right now in the school division. So, you know, we think that's a really good thing. I do, I do think we need to keep our eye on the ball because when we're done with PA Middle next summer and Plaza, we will not have a large construction project coming up out of the ground for the first time in my career. Couple of projects that were put on hold that kind of got caught in March. Bayside High School locker removal, kind of will mirror what we did at Kempsville High School, same footprint. And really, space makers, the general contractors agreed to hold their price. So we'll bring back to you later this fall, really the same contract that was on your agenda earlier. Bjorn Marshall is actually a Bayside High School alum, so he's excited about going into his, where he went to high school and widening the hallways over there. And I can tell you that the staff is excited about it. So we'll, we'll bring that back to you in the fall and do that in the summer of '21. And same thing here, we were scheduled to do five more gym floor projects where we go in and overlay the grand wood with a product that's a little easier on the knees and the joints. The contractor here also has agreed to hold his price, so we'll probably bring this back to you at the same time we bring the locker removal from Bayside back this fall and accomplish that, that next summer. Madam Chair, that completes our update. A lot going on, a lot to be thankful for.
Well, thank you. And we have a few hands raised. Mrs. Anderson.
So when PA Middle is finished, then that means the old Callum will be the old, it's always going to be the old Callum. It's currently PA Middle now, but that means it'll be empty. And so I know you're not going to get rid of that building because we've been talking about utilizing it as a swing space, but what do you do? Are you, are you making any improvements there before we ever decide to use it as a swing space again? I mean, like, I just know, I was, I was there recently and their gym floor was like buckled.
Yeah, it, so you're correct. Next summer, when PA Middle moves out of what I call, I went to call it the old Callum and moves into the new building, we will have a building that will be, will be an empty asset. That building is, is planned for swing space for a really long time. All of the work that's been done around here related to swing space and what happened at Thurgood, I think everybody would recognize the importance of that. And so the plan is over the next, however long it takes, folks, to swing Prince Sam High School, Bayside High School, First Colonial in Kempsville, ultimately through Callum. But, so that building will continue to be maintained. We had some, we had some structural issues. If you rode down Nemo, you saw people working on the stadium. Well, the stadium's not in use, but we had structural issues. We know one day that it will likely be used as a high school stadium again, so we worked on that. But it gets the same level of maintenance that every one of our other buildings does.
Hi.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was Mrs. Ricks, and then Ms. Owens.
I just have to say thank you. I think you guys are doing an amazing, amazing job. I know you're trying to present that to us, that you are, but it's very obvious with all that you guys get done in the summer and just keeping up, keeping our buildings up and doing what you do is amazing. I mean, even if we didn't even build new schools right now, just what you're doing with, with keeping everything going, I think we can definitely be the people to watch from other school systems. If they could do what we do, I think they'd be lucky. So thank you for doing what you're doing. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I, our maintenance staff, you know, we, we changed our maintenance delivery model a couple of years ago. You can't do that without, with the, without the backing of leadership. And so the building manager model, where we now have building managers in our buildings, and we got away from the zone model, has been a huge, huge success. Principals rely on their building managers. They've come in real handy during the past three or four months. And so I can't say, you know, Eric Woodhouse and the guys and, and maintenance services and the work they do each and every day. We take an awful lot for granted around here. The, our buildings are really clean, they're well-maintained, and we've got a lot of assets to keep track of. And the, the, the men and women on the ground that do this work do it really, really well.
Ms. Owens.
Thank you. Yeah, I, would, second that I, I think Mr. Woodhouse and the admin staff with the changes to the manager method has been really, really impressive. I had some questions about the HVAC systems that we've done, or the air conditioning units, really. You mentioned that we are getting one in the kitchen of whatever school that was. Can you tell me how many kitchens roughly we still have that don't have air conditioning?
I, I'll have to get back to you, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
To how many.
Sure. It, I, I don't know if, how much of an issue or, or not an issue it, it might be. Maybe somebody can check and kind of get back to us. When I'm thinking about spaces in our school where adults will have to congregate, we're not going to do break rooms, we're going to try and keep teachers apart, all of those things. But I assume we're going to need a couple of people in a kitchen making meals. And it, it seems like a small area, and if we don't have great circulation there already, that, that seems like an area that I, I just want to get more information on because I want to make sure we're keeping our cafeteria staff just as safe as we're worried about our teachers and students.
I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
I want to know what, is school board ever going to get a chance to go see any of these new buildings?
Yes. Yeah, we will arrange that, obviously, with everything else going on now, wasn't the time. But we will make sure that you have an opportunity to come through and walk through those buildings. And I think, at least for my, my personal preference, we'll wait till it cools off a little before we take you to PA Middle because the HVAC's not on yet. And we went through and all of us were sweating pretty good by the time we got out of the building.
Okay, good.
But the, but the others are dried up and HVAC'd in, and so we'll, we'll arrange that. We just have been otherwise occupied, but we'll get you in. Before we wrap up the workshop, we do need to make one clarification because I don't want it to be confusing to you all or to our community about the funding of the AADA project. So Jack, could you just speak to that for half a second?
Absolutely. Thanks, Alex Spence. So it, and it lists fully funded on the slide where you see AADA. But as a reminder, that's contingent on the sale of the Laskin Road Annex property from the brief's discussion. So that, that process is still working and is still going through, but wanted to be in full disclosure, as you understand what that fully funded meant on the slide, is that we're still awaiting the disposition of Laskin Road Annex.
Yeah. And I, I just raised the issue because I want to make sure it stays on the board's radar that we do have, I think we put four and a half million dollars in, through reversion. We received that last year, in last year's reversion request. So that's what's initiating our ability to do the design phase. And then we do have the remainder of that to fill out with the intention that the sale of the Laskin Road Annex will assist with that. And then there may be additional dollars that need to be filled in, and we'll have to talk about that at that time.
So I, I think I speak for all our colleagues, just like what Ms. Anderson was referring to these enhancements and visiting. But just overall, I think we all miss our visits to the schools just as much as the teachers and students miss being there. And, and so this reminds us that, you know, it's, we just don't think in terms of brick and mortar, you do, but we, we've got, we just, that's not been our focus of late. So it, this came at a perfect time and just happy to know everything's on track. Okay, thank you. Yeah, let me get my script. Mr. Edward, would you read the motion, please, to take us into our closed meeting?
Madam Chair, I make the following motion that the school board recess into closed meeting pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following reasons. One, personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, namely to discuss and consider the superintendent's annual goals and performance expectations. Two, consultation with legal counsel, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members where consultations pertaining to actual or probable litigation or such consultation or briefings in open meetings would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, namely to discuss the status of a pending litigation matter and settlement authority.
Second, Mrs. Felton, thank you. Oh, we have to vote? I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor, please show by a raise of hands.
Mrs. Ryan, just for, just for kicks, I would just recommend that when you're going into close, based on some of the conversations you've had and changes that have been contemplated around, making sure board members have a time to express their desire not to go into close, that you at least give a moment for discussion.
Hmm.
I, I just recommend that become a practice, that you just ask for a discussion before you take a vote.
Discussion. Hearing none. Now I will ask for a rose hand vote. Thank you. For all, for the all in favor.
The status of our virtual participants.
No, they can't.
I know they can't.
We're just, I should.
That ought to be stated, though.
Okay. I was thinking the same thing. And just.
You have a call. Seven, one, seven, one. You're terminating people online.
Well, we're not on camera, so there's nobody to state it to.
So they're not going to. Can I stop share?
Yes.
Right here. Do you have a call? Thank you.
No, we're good. We're good.
You have one. You do have one. You can walk in. Don't bring snacks. You're not going to make it that long. It's going to be my goal, so I'm going to just offer snacks to people.